All right, welcome everyone to our city council meeting for January 23rd, 2023. A few notes as always, we are here in person, but we are still having staff and members of the public join remotely, so just note that I continue to toggle back and forth between my screen and the audience. We do take breaks every 90 to 120 minutes between items if we need to. I mean, we take breaks, but if we go that long. All right, so we start every meeting with our open comment section, and this is an opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item that we will not be taking public testimony on later in the agenda. You have up to four minutes to speak for a total of up to 20 minutes, and we will be keeping track of time using this timer and a timer up on the wall, so please don't worry if I need to give you a reminder that you're closing in on your time, or if I do need to cut you off to allow others to speak. I do have a list of people signed up in front of me and may have others joining virtually, and I do need to take a second to sign into Zoom, so we'll go back and forth, but we'll start with in-person today. As always, comments are directed to me as council president, and while we certainly appreciate any constructive comments about our performance or city issues, just we ask that you do so respectfully. And with that, we will start with Mr. Wes Lund. Come on up, and you have four minutes, and just excuse me while I'm signing into Zoom as you're coming up here.
Thank you. I have about four things I want to try to talk to you about tonight. I want to say I hope everybody's getting through this flu season okay. Sorry, we don't have the flu season anymore, the clot season, or the stroke season, whichever it is. But I wanted to share with you these boots that were a gift to me. These were left to me by Jerry Volfer, and some of you who are from this town may remember Jerry Volfer. They're awfully big boots to fill. These were a little small for him, if you know that guy. He was a survivor of a death camp, a Holocaust camp, in what today is known as the Czech Republic. The death camp he was at in World War II, his family was arrested and sent to a place called Tarasen, which is really a beautiful, beautiful death camp, as far as death camps go. It was created using a Baroque castle, and the Nazis used this ancient Baroque castle, which had been built in the 1600s, to make a camp that was so beautiful, it was like a dog and pony show for all the visitors from the American Red Cross and from the International Red Cross. It was a place where they would take anyone who wanted to see what life was like in a death camp. And we know a lot about Tarasen because it was so beautiful. It was a showcase for the Nazis to show off how well the people there were being treated. And Jerry Volfer's parents, it wasn't a normal place. His parents were involved in politics, and they were a very special kind of prisoner indeed. They were dissenters. People who questioned the Nazi regime were rounded up and sent to Tarasen because the Nazis were hoping they could reform these people by treating them a little bit better than the ones that were sent to other places. So Jerry Volfer did an event here in Rochester, which was covered, and then the press coverage disappeared, so it was memory hole. It's sort of interesting to me that that happens. And what happens to dissent is important. We have a lot of information about Tarasen because a lot of movies were made there. The Nazi film directors would make movies there. So moving on to what I want to talk about tonight, when we have dissent in Rochester, as we experienced Saturday morning at our public facility here at the CTEC campus, the Winona State University branch of the Minnesota, of the state school system, and the other educational facilities that are located there, there's about four entities, it's RCTC, and we had a massive police response. Probably every police cruiser that was on duty Saturday morning, the 21st of January, was at that facility. There probably was no, there were about six vehicles that I saw. So I'm really curious. I hope all the documents are preserved. I hope the camera footage is reserved, and I hope everyone gets a chance to see what occurred from the police officer's point of view. Am I running out of time? Oh, that's the one-minute warning. So about dissent, people are asking questions about abortion, about financing, about two-way issues, and other things, but I'm giving you this document here tonight because this is about taxation. It's about taking value and money from individuals against their will, which is also known as theft, and spending it on things that might be frivolous or the public doesn't necessarily agree with because we don't have public feedback time to really go in granularity into those expenditures. We shouldn't be building things we can't afford. We should live within our means. We should use it up, wear it out, make it do or do without. That's a very precious thing that we learned from our women in our ancestral background. Use it up, wear it out, make it do or do it out, do without, just like these boots. And I'll give them back to Jerry Volfer's children or grandchildren if they want them, because they should really have them.
Thank you, Ms. Lund.
Thank you, guys. Please read this.
All right, is there anyone joining virtually? And Clerk Geisler, I'll lean on you to let me know, but for those joining virtually, use the raise hand function in Zoom or press star nine by phone. Seeing no one, we'll move on to Gail Madison.
Council President, City Council, Happy New Year. Sorry not to speak every time, so I wanted to give everybody else some time last session. Anyway, I provided a handout with a number of items. They include quotes, John Hopkins study, I do trust the science and some things around the globe. And what compelled me to do this was that, you know, I kind of spar back and forth with Mayor Norton on social media on the Facebook account that she hijacked from the public, but she continues to push the COVID vaccine and the jab. And in these discussions, you know, I'm asking, you know, we're seeing all these people that are passing away or dropping dead quickly. I'm getting a lot of information. One of my friends has actually wrote the Bioterrorism Act and Anti-Terrorism Act in 1989, and I even offered to say, hey, let's have some community civil discourse and talk about these things, because it's been a top-down initiative. If the masks worked, if the shots had worked, we wouldn't have to have Booster of the Month on the shots. And we're seeing a lot of heart attacks and strokes and myocarditis, pericarditis. I asked Norton, I said, you know, are we not supposed to notice this? Do you know of people that work at these major institutions right here in this town who three and four people have dropped dead and, you know, after being forced? The only commonality I can come up with unless it's fentanyl is something that was mandated in 2021, 2022, and current day. Anyway, in my handouts, I want to bring up a few things. One says, nobody said you wouldn't get COVID if you were vaccinated. Well, yeah, they did. We have Fauci. When people are vaccinated, they're not going to get infected. Our President, United States, you're not going to get COVID if you have these vaccines. But every time we turn around, we're looking at that we're supposed to take another shot. And my beef was Norton texted me the other day, and I finally said, stop texting me. She said, just heard firsthand from the United States Surgeon General that vaccines have been successful. We should double down on getting everyone vaccinated against COVID. She's spewing only what the top-down evidently tells her, because when I asked her, let's have these discussions, I'm open to hear what you have to say, she declines, and she says, I follow the science. Well, this is what everyone's saying, yelling at me, that I want peer-reviewed articles, 10 sources. I laugh because you required zero proof of efficacy or ingredients, signed and informed consent, we weren't informed, and let people in parking lots give you shots, and you went and got the free french fries. Robert Kennedy Jr., there's a lawsuit going on right now. It's called TNI. It's going after social media who have quelled even groups of people that have been severely injured, neurologically, even young children, and there was a group of about 65,000 of them. Facebook shut them down. Doctors don't acknowledge that they're injured. They have severe neurological and heart issues, and many of them lose their incomes or life savings because they have nowhere to go and there's no compensation. But RF Kennedy Jr. said, your chance of dying, and this actually came from Pfizer's own studies, it's just Robert Kennedy Jr.'s quote, your chance of dying of a heart attack from that vaccine, according to Pfizer in his own studies, is 500% greater than if you're unvaccinated. So they knew they were going to kill a lot of people, and they did it anyway. The point that I'm going to make is, I took my chances. I had COVID. I went for probably a year not being able to smell or taste, but I took my chances, and I think the chance that I took far outweighed in the outcome of a little while of not being able to taste and smell, far outweighed the strokes and the heart attack. And I think our community needs to be talking about these issues, including the doctors and all that at Mayo, to be transparent to us, the citizens of Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Not seeing anyone, so we'll move on to Tom DeBoer.
Council President Carlson, council members, my name is Tom DeBoer. No facts tonight, just thanks. At your January 9th meeting, you approved the funding plan for our municipal golf programs. I thank you for that decision. It should provide the funds to sustain municipal golf in Rochester for many years to come. Another thing I thank you for is your endorsement today of the alternative concept plan for the soldiers' field changes with the new pool and parks. What a wonderful thing we are going to have to look forward to in Rochester. But more importantly, I need to thank you people, staff, and the citizens of Rochester that got involved in this. I've shared before, I've been involved in council activities for 45 years. I have absolutely never, ever seen a process vetted as thoroughly as this was. We all went back to when we were little kids. We were taught, look, listen, and learn. We did those things. There were well over 10 different meetings that the public got to come to, provide their input. Staff listened to it, came up with some marvelous designs, and we are headed to a great future for the city of Rochester. So really, everybody needs to say thanks to themselves for doing what we did. Good night.
Thanks, Mr. DeBoer. Anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Seeing no one, Mr. DeSilva.
Thank you. I understand of social media. One thing that I was glad to have learned last week from being in social media is that our absentee mayor knows math. She posted a picture of a parking ramp six, and if you know, familiar with it, there's a display outside that shows how many vacant spots there are on each level. And, you know, using her math skills, she surmised that, no, there were 233 spots available at that time, at that ramp during the day, and encouraged people since those spots were available, that they should go and fill those spots. And while they fill those spots, go downtown and patronize businesses. Well, we don't go to parking garages to fill spots. We don't do that. That's not the purpose of us going there. Using, it was a useless post. You know, that's not an incentive. Having empty spots at a parking ramp is not a motivation to go and shop or dine or anything of that sort. It was ridiculous. I doubled down during the comment section responding to someone saying that we should go downtown. The reason why businesses are struggling downtown, they're crippled downtown, is because ordinary people are refusing to, you know, fill those spots and go shop and dine and all that stuff. And, you know, it said it was an opportunity to do long lunches. I'm not sure who does long lunches. I don't do long lunches. Do you? I think the only politicians, upper management, and the idle rich do two-hour lunches. It betrays an elitist understanding of what cripples downtown here, and it was her, and to an extent, you as well, for allowing, you know, the extra restrictions on businesses to take place. So many businesses died. So many people lost their jobs, their livelihoods. And here she is, and here you are, acting as if nothing happened. I remember, I have friends who lost their jobs, friends who lost their businesses, and you proceed like you don't care. To this day, downtown is in trouble, and there's nothing, nothing that has been done artificially in terms of, you know, activities and hoopla and bread and circuses has done a thing to revitalize downtown. You don't have the answers. You don't have the expertise. She certainly doesn't. All you do is cosmetic stuff to make it seem like anything is happening. Those poor people, all they do is pay taxes. It's not just you and her, it's also the Chamber of Commerce. It's the Rochester Downtown Alliance. You don't have answers. You don't have solutions because you lack the competence. You lack the expertise. No, all you did during the COVID crisis collectively was to make things worse. That's all you did. That's all you can do. Get out of the way. Realize your limitations, and there are many. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSilva. Final call for anybody joining virtually. Seeing no one, anybody else wanting to speak? Okay, we'll close the public comment period and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
The Mayor Norton is absent.
Thank you. City Administrator Ms. Zolms, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, council members, those who remain in the audience and online for being here. We always start this off by reminding folks of our customer service principles, and all our teammates take this very seriously in their day-to-day work and how they provide service to the community with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence. And so I just thank all of them for always coming to work with that in mind. Just a few things that are coming up in the community. We did just talk about housing for, I think we had some speed talking happening in order to get through that at the study session, but the 44th Annual Rochester Area Builders Home Show is coming up on February 3rd through 5th, so we do have a lot of teammates that participate in that as we look to make sure that we have folks who are aware of careers in construction, as well as to understand what is available within our community in order to be able to make homes happen. Here in Rochester, admission for age seven and up is $5. It's free for six and younger, and there's a two-for-one admission on the Friday night of that event. And then Saturday is free admission with a student ID, and Saturday is the Construction Careers Fair at the Rochester Area Builders Home Show. So we are always looking for ways to get people engaged in the construction community to make sure that we can have a more livable community. Also, just a reminder that the library has a return to a new and improved bookmobile inside the library for our young readers. So the bookmobile has the new logo for the library, and it's in the youth services area in the play spot, so folks that are out at the library can have that to look forward to, in addition to the bookmobile they see across the community, a little bit bigger. And then finally, I did just want to thank Experience Rochester and all of the restaurants that participated in the first, hopefully, annual Rochester Restaurant Week. There were a lot of support from local media to get the word out, and a number of businesses sharing that they actually saw a lot more people out. So thanks to everyone that went out and participated, either as a business or as a diner at Rochester Restaurant Week, and we look forward to hopefully having that comeback annually. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Zolms. Just to clarify, Mayor Norton is not absent. She's feeling under the weather, so joining virtually. That means that she can actively listen but not participate, so she just asked me to share that there are boards and commission vacancies tonight, or right now, and we encourage people to apply. The vacancies are the Fire Civil Service, Heritage Preservation, and the Music Board for Ward Six in particular. All right, with that, we will turn it over to approving the order of the agenda. We do have a couple tweaks that I want to make sure everybody is clear on. We have one minor edit to the resolution associated with F8, which is the official livestream for council meetings. And this language substitution has been, was just clarifying, and has been handed out to all of us here on council. We also were sent an electronic version, and it will be, the change will be posted after tonight's meeting. And then Attorney Spindler Craig just informed me of one other very small change to item F15. Mr. Spindler Craig, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, item F15 is the Cartway Access Matter. Point number two of that resolution was setting a public hearing for April 17th based on some last-minute information about the timing of the appraisal relative to that matter. We need to shift that to the second meeting in May, which is May 15th. That's the only amendment to F15.
Okay, and again, that will be posted after tonight's meeting?
It will be.
Okay, but just so all of us are clear of the change, all right.
So I'll move approval with those two adjustments.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen, any discussion?
No, I think as long as this is getting noted correctly, I think we're in good shape.
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Bransford stepped away for a second, just waiting for him to return.
Aye.
Okay, and he votes aye as well, so motion carries 7-0. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Dennis has pulled items F7, 8, and 10. Councilmember Kirkpatrick has pulled item F13. These will be under reports and recommendations. Is there anything else? Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you. I pulled F10 based on some questions constituents had, and since this time, I've gotten answered, so I will withdraw my pulling of F10.
All right. Anything else? Okay, so if I can do numbering correctly, we will invite a motion to approve and block items F1 through 6, F8 and I, F11 and 12, and F14 through 19. Did I miss it?
No, I think, yeah, I think we have since put 10 back on the agenda, so I think it would be 1 through 6.
1 through 6.
9 through 12.
12 through 14 through 19. Thank you. Sorry about that. This is why I ask ahead of time.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Bransford, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we will move on to our public hearing item. And we only have one item tonight, and we don't have an applicant for this one, so just quickly, we'll do a staff introduction to the item. We'll open the public comment for this item in particular. It's only for those who have continued, been part of the continuation of the public hearing. And then we'll close the public hearing. If there are any questions of staff, that's great. Otherwise, we'll move on to a motion and discussion. So is Tyler Neymeyer joining virtually? All right, Mr. Neymeyer, if you want to go ahead and introduce item G1, the certification for collection with taxes of unpaid special charges, sidewalk replacement and repair specific to the continued parcels.
Sure. Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I am Tyler Neymeyer with Public Works Department. As a council president said, this is a continuation of the public hearing for certification of collection with taxes of unpaid special charges for sidewalk replacement and repair, originally from January 9th. The requested action tonight is approving a resolution levying the continued parcels from that January 9th meeting, from the public hearing there, for the proposed assessments for sidewalk replacement and repair, which would be assessed over a period of five years. These charges are for contractor fees related to sidewalk replacement and repair, reimbursing the city for completing a special charges related to code enforcement. Reimbursement is based on bid price per unit or unit rate established by the council each year, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neymeyer. We'll get back to you after the public hearing. We will open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? And there isn't anyone here in the audience? Is there anyone joining virtually? Use the raise hand function or press star nine. Final call. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And any questions for staff? Hearing none, I'd invite a motion.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Bransford, you have the floor.
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion?
Yep.
Go ahead, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that this is, I mean, I feel bad how this has worked out, but I have gone through, the staff followed the rules as they were in place in 2021 and 2022. We've made changes for 2023, and some properties are getting caught on just on the wrong side. From my perspective, other people had to pay these same assessments in 2018, 2019, 2020. But again, I think they'll have to stand. There's no way to have the rest of the city pay for these assessments when the city was following the rules as they were in place.
Thank you for that, Mr. Keen. Anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That's it for our public hearings. We'll move on to reports and recommendations. And Ms. Heather Corcoran is here to introduce item H1, which is reaffirming our council-adopted local option sales tax resolution passed on December 5th.
Thank you, Council President Carlson and council members. My name is Heather Corcoran, Legislative Affairs and Policy Director for the city. The item before you today is a reaffirmation of the council-adopted resolution that was passed on December 5th, 2022. The council resolution requested authority to extend the city's local option sales tax, and it was authorized concurrently with the 2023 legislative priorities, and both were approved unanimously on December 5th, 2022. So with the addition of a new council member and yourselves in the year 2023 reaffirming support of the local option sales tax, including the four projects as adopted in the December 5th resolution, is timely. The adopted resolution, along with the additional regional significance documentation that was included in your packets, has been submitted to the legislature prior to the statutory deadline of January 31st of this year. Just a snippet of background, just to remind ourselves, Rochester's had a local sales tax in place since 1983, and the tool has funded a number of significant projects that have benefited the community region and the state of Minnesota. The most recent general local option sales tax was enacted in 2013. It generates approximately $12 million per year, and is projected to meet all of its funding obligations by 2024. As part of the 2023 legislative priorities, the city is seeking renewal of the 0.5% general sales tax for 16.4 years, collecting a total of $205 million in order to fund four project areas. One, an economic vitality fund dedicated with $50 million. Two, a street reconstruction fund for $50 million. Three, a flood control and water quality bucket of funds for $40 million. And four, a regional sports and recreation complex with $65 million. So the action for you tonight is to reaffirm the resolution passed on December 5th, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Questions? I'm just looking at you, Mr. Wall. Go ahead.
The tax would last for about 16.4 years. Clearly, the projects are not going to be done sequentially. We just do the projects and charge that against ourselves and continue to pay for it over 16.4 years?
I'm going to phone a friend over to administer your thoughts, I think, with the financing question. I accept. Councilmember Wall, council members, typically what would happen if this is approved by the legislature and then reaffirmed with a local vote of the general public, is that we would look at those projects and try to be very strategic about what we would finance and what we would be able to finance over time, because obviously there's interest associated if we were to finance a project. I think with the way that these projects are laid out, we have a lot of options in order to be able to maximize the dollars that are coming forward and the results for the community. And so it would really depend on what the final actual vote is of the community and how we would want to move those forward in order to get as much bang for your buck as possible in order to move those forward. So it would probably be a combination of both.
Okay.
Right, and some things require bolus all at once compared to funding over time like flood, right, flood control. Councilmember Keen.
Oh, yeah, again, I want to, again, this is coming to us sort of from other business, and I think it's probably a good thing to do, realizing that we didn't get any action on our legislative priorities in 2022, but since we have a slightly different council going from 2022 to 2023, I think this is a good action. I'd like to move to vote to reaffirm the support of the local option sales resolution number 290-22, adopted in December 5th.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor?
Yeah, again, I think just the idea of reaffirming to make sure we're clear. I'm hoping that based on this being a re-up and that, that we get the good support, because I think that good support from this council stands important when the legislatures look and know to know that we're firmly behind this.
Appreciate those comments. I will just add that it's been really great to be starting to meet with our legislative delegation and have a lot of positive support, and just want to thank them all for their advocacy and hopefully carrying this forward this year. Any final comments? Councilmember Dennis?
I have a lot of support for this, and I elaborated on this at the last council meeting. I just wanted to say, for those who had missed the last council meeting, if they revisit the very end with other business, you can see how the progression has, is wonderful with what was proposed at the last meeting in other business, quick motion amendments to what is proposed now. I feel this is a lot, well, very well-worded. It has just a very more solid firming stance to it that we want to see in our council and government to get things done. So I just want to say thank you for postponing the, this motion and revisiting it with everyone being able to look further into it. So, thank you, and I hope it passes.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Corcoran. All right, well, we will move on to our pulled items for this evening. We have F-7 to start, which is the Ethical Practices Board 2022 Annual Report, pulled by Councilmember Dennis, and Attorney Spindler-Craig is here to answer questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. Let me grab this here. I pulled this item because I do, I am in support of it, but I wanted to just bring up some, a couple, couple issues. I feel that when it comes to the Ethical Practices Board, which I am very happy that we have for our city, in the information that we were provided, the quote here on citizens must have confidence in the integrity of their government officials, which is both elected officials and officials that are hired or appointed, and everyone who works in government. I feel that there has been some transparency issues, some people who have had concerns with just getting information. And one concern was the last Ethical Practices Committee. Several people in the city, three in Ward 6, reached out wanting to attend this next meeting, which is, was scheduled for January 11th at 10:30. So they canceled plans, they rescheduled their work to attend this meeting that was announced to be on January 11th. Without explanation, it was canceled. There wasn't any notification why. People tried to look up the meetings for that meeting, minutes for that meeting, and they were unsuccessful, and then it's incredibly vague on what is covered at the meeting. The meetings are open to the public, so I feel that in the future, having more transparency, more, having the meeting minutes more elaborate, and being just, just more upfront with the issues that are occurring in our community would be appreciated. So I do appreciate the work that the Ethics Committee does. Again, I support this, so I move to, to pass this.
I'll second.
Oh, okay, thank you. I move, I move to pass the F-7, which is the Ethical Practices Board Annual Report.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion, Councilmember Dennis?
I think I covered it. Like, again, I would hope in the future that when things are scheduled and when they are, information is brought up, that the city council has that information so that we can pass that on to the constituents, and then to honor residents' schedules and their desire to be involved by having information promptly posted and minutes thoroughly transparent. Thank you.
Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, I have, I have some experience with this board, not as a member, but one thing we have to be mindful of is that this is a completely voluntary board. So if to get to that point where they need very detailed minutes and et cetera, et cetera, they may need a little help there by staff, I don't know, but you just have to remember some of these boards are peopled by volunteers who are in as much a time crunch as all of us, and I think they do a wonderful job. Not that Councilmember Dennis was saying otherwise, but, excuse me, just, just food for thought.
Councilmember Bransford, any final discussion?
Madam President, just briefly, I'm, I'm not sure if there were any questions in, in Councilmember Dennis's suggestion there. I would just briefly explain, though, I guess, to address the integrity. Thank you, Councilmember Bransford, of, of this board. The specific meeting that is being referenced was canceled for a specific reason, a medical condition of the chair. That was entirely understandable, and a good reason to cancel the meeting. I don't know about the accuracy of whether some people changed around their schedules to try to make it to that meeting. I'm not sure if that's true, if that's unfortunate. Any reference to some sense of secretiveness of this meeting, I'm not sure where any of that would come from. We go through the standard protocol of hosting those meetings as we do with all others, including an agenda. Minutes are included from the prior meeting. Typically, we don't post minutes until they are approved by the body at the next meeting. So I'm not sure what reference there would be to there not being minutes from a meeting that didn't occur. So just want to clear up a few, a few of those things. Of course, going forward, the meetings will be posted. There, that schedule is available online, and we'll continue that. Commission's good work.
Sounds like there's a lot of support for the item on the agenda. So, Councilmember Dennis, if you have a very narrow final comment here.
Well, I just, point of clarification, of course, there wouldn't be minutes if it didn't happen. I was referring to the, the meeting that happened in late November, and I would appreciate that what I say about constituents would be taken without the reference of doubt. I feel that I want to honor everyone's schedule and respect people who want to attend these, and a meeting such as this that's not held every month does have this issue where if it's scheduled, people assume, and you have to post it, of course, you know, a couple days prior. But with it being canceled without notice, which it's a good reason to cancel, someone's ill, but doesn't look like it was rescheduled or had a rain check. So my issue was the length of time the minutes took from the November meeting to become public. I feel that minutes could be a little bit more prompt if possible, and then the incredible vagueness of the minutes. So when you read the minutes, you're really not sure what was said at all, and it's not filmed, to my knowledge. So I just, not everyone can attend these meetings, and I would just like more thorough minutes for meetings that obviously do take place. And I would just say thank you again to Ethics Board and everyone who volunteers their time to serve our great city, because we, with, you know, trust is transparency, and I really appreciate everyone upholding that. So thank you for everyone. Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Okay, next item. Is the item F-8, Official Livestream for Council Meetings, also pulled by Councilmember Dennis, and just note that we did tweak the language to clarify.
And I appreciate getting that tweak right when we got here. So it does, I mean, I just wanted to emphasize the importance from people who have reached out. If, if the city attorney room would like me to forward on emails that constituents have sent to the entire council, I'm happy to do so. But the importance of having livestream on cable TV is instrumental to people here in Rochester. The, I contacted the director of 125 Live, who stated that, that seniors in the program, 600 of them, had no email address when they, when COVID hit. There's a lot of people who do not have access or do not have knowledge or ability for computer internet. They get their information over the TV. I do, also, my kids right now are watching the channel 188 to make sure that, you know, they can be informed, and it's a safe thing for children to have a, you know, TV on instead of access maybe to internet at times. And we want more, just like I mentioned before, more transparency, more access to our government and information. So my, my, just want to make a guarantee that this resolution does not at all take emphasis away from the live streaming for those who need that for our council meetings. So that was, so I'm going to move to, to pass this, but I, I want those questions answered prior to voting. So I move to pass the resolution as just updated for F-8.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dennis?
So I would, would hope that I could get a staff to comment, to guarantee, to council and citizens in Rochester, that even though we recognize the internet option as the primary means, that we, as a city, will continue the use and maintenance and upkeep of those who rely on, on streaming through cable TV.
Hi, Ms. Hire, I see you there. Would you like to reaffirm?
Yes, thank you so much, Council President, members of council. My name is Heather Hire. I am a management analyst in the City Administration Department. And yes, Councilmember Dennis, this is intended to prioritize the livestream for troubleshooting during council sessions, rather the main meeting. It does give us a little bit more flexibility with the study sessions to have those in spaces where we can't necessarily access the cable broadcast, but that we would certainly rebroadcast to cable.
Okay. So, so just to clarify, so that, so we will take all, everything possible to make sure that the cable goes smoothly, efficiently, and will not end here for residents in Rochester, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, when this was first discussed back in fourth quarter of 2022, I had similar concerns about the internet being a replacement for the full residency. And so I, again, I'm still viewing this as an important motion so that the staff can prioritize the online and basically have more time to troubleshoot if there are issues with moving from our feed into the different cable systems. So I support the resolution as is written.
Great. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
I just want to say thank you to you, Ms. Hire, for working with the verbiage suggestion and bringing that, making those changes that I requested. Thank you very much.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hire, for joining. Over to you, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, for item F-13, Findings of Fact and Abatement Order for the Property at 3015 Marion Road Southeast.
Thank you.
And we have Taryn Edens here to answer questions.
Awesome, thank you. I just, I wanted to express my thanks to the city and then also to my fellow council members for, if you recall, on November 14th, we actually voted to extend some time to Mr. German on his property that had been vandalized and burned. And although this had been lengthy, sitting, sitting there for quite a while, they've been, he has been fairly productive, and you might not know, but the property went into contract, and it was supposed to close on Friday, but that closing fell through. And although this is unrelated to the state statute that we have to follow and approve the findings of fact this evening, it's nice to know that we were able to give someone time that they needed to be able to do something. And I'm hopeful that the additional time that's required for the city to follow through on doing what is needed for the statute with findings of fact, it will give them some more time to be able to figure out those little kinks that need to be worked out from the, when they weren't able to close on Friday. So Taryn, would you just like to comment on anything?
Sure, this is Taryn with Community Development. So just to reiterate, the owner was given until the 20th, which was last Friday, confirmed he had a sale closing that day, and it got delayed. So we have seen some action. A demolition permit has been completed. So we are really just doing this as a continuation of our authority to demolish it in the event it is not done. It'll, it won't happen tomorrow. It'll probably still take two weeks to bid this work out, I would say, at least, to get it doing so, to get things going. So it's still, we still intend to work with the owner in hopes that the closing will occur. Otherwise, this is our continuation of the ability in force if that falls through.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or motion?
Like a two-part motion to adopt the findings and authorize the issuance of the abatement order.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keane, you have the floor?
Yeah, again, I, looking at the timelines on this, I know we, from our perspective, it started November of 2022. That's not when it really started. This has been going on for way longer than that, and I think the city's been more than reasonable. And I want to have these two things, both the finding of fact, but the authorization issuance in place for staff to move ahead.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, that is it for our reports and recommendations. We don't have any CIAs. We have one ordinance first reading. Mr. Spindler-Craig, go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam President. Item J-1, Ordinance Rezoning Approximately 0.62 Acres of Land from R-2 Low Density Residential to the R-3 Medium Density Residential and Amending Ordinance Number 2785, Known as the Zoning Ordinance and Land Development Manual of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any second readings. We don't have any table items. We have other business, and we have our Economic Development Authority meeting tonight. So I'd invite a motion to recess the council meeting for a meeting of the Rochester Economic Development Authority.
Some have moved. Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. I will now call to order the Rochester Economic Development Authority meeting for January 23rd. We have one item on our consent agenda, the meeting minutes from, I believe, November 14th. Is there, all right, Clerk Esler, are you getting the seconds? There are plentiful tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bransford, you have the floor?
Good work.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to other, other, other business. Ms. Dennis, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So I had three points of other business, and these are issues that were brought to me by residents in Rochester. So I feel it's important to have a place to, to bring these up. One would be, and actually, this is the first concern I have, and I've had for a while, is the consistency of information. We want our colleagues to have, you know, be informed and have the most accurate information as possible to make these important decisions in our city. I pulled F-10 today because I had a lot of questions, and from constituent in particular who, who was talking about tree prices and bids, and, and a colleague of mine forwarded me an email that they received from staff to answer these questions that the resident I was talking to had. And I feel there's a lot of times where one council member has a lot of questions, and then they, they ask it, their questions to a certain staff, that staff gets back to that particular council member. I know some of my colleagues, CC, the city administrator in, which is, I think is a wonderful thing to do, but not everyone in the council has the same information when making decisions. And so I feel that is something, would be good to have a process or something to help align this, you know, important information so that we can all make the most accurate votes and decisions. So my question on that would be, what would be the best way to ensure that every council member has the equal information available? Can I ask that to Allison? I'm sorry, City Administrator Elms?
Sure, Council, Councilmember Dennis, I-
I never received an email with questions about item F10, so I don't know how to forward those questions that I'm not copied on. I usually try to forward things that seem substantive and germane to any broad group of people. As has been shared before, if there are questions, we ask that you get those in by 5 o'clock on Thursday, and we try to send those out by noon on Friday. Those typically, we would prefer to get according to the protocol by email, copying the presenter, the department head, the deputy, and the city administrator for all communication protocols so that we can try to vet those. However, if I don't get any questions except for one person, and they seem fairly simple and germane, and they answer that person's question, I also don't inundate the council with simple questions and answers about things that other people haven't raised. So it is a little bit of an art versus a science. So if I get a simple question from one person, I try to determine whether or not I think that it would have substantive change to the policy. And when those have been significant answers from the department, we send those out to the entire City Council. So there's sort of a two-way protocol of the communication. So if I'm not aware that there are questions until, say, 12:57 today, then I wouldn't know that those questions are beyond one individual council member.
Well, I hear what you're saying. I feel that all information on all topics should be provided to all council members. That's, so, those are my thoughts. Thank you for answering. And my second issue is the agenda. I know I've talked about this before, but we have, time right now is before 8 o'clock, and we're ending our meeting right now. And then there's other meetings that go well past midnight into the next day. When we go those, like, seven-hour meetings, you see colleagues where their eyes start to glare over, and they're like, you know, it's 1:00 AM in the morning. And I want to know how we can maybe try to balance agendas so that some are not packed, and which would cause, you know, these 1,500-page packets, people maybe not being able to truly understand all the information before voting. And how can council members get things on the agenda? Because to my knowledge, other cities, the council determines the agenda. The council also has some say, you know, like, for us to put something on the agenda, we have to do a CIA, do this huge process, find a colleague to, you know, and do this to have a constituent's concern or some very important issue be brought up while other cities say that they have just been able to talk to their city administrator and talk to the staff. So what is the process? And can it be changed so that the City Council, who is elected by the people directly, have more of a say of what the city is focused on in the future?
Mr. Bransford?
So I appreciate the fact that we want to have the freedom to put something on an agenda. I happen to actually like the CIA process because if we have a rogue on the council that wants to just inundate us with things.
I raised my hand.
Oh, okay.
Why did you raise your hand?
I mean, I get it. I mean, it's sort of the freedom to do XYZ as a city council member, the duly-elected ward representative, with your election certificate and freedom to, you know, support your ward and your constituents. But at the same time, I see a CIA process as a really nice, collimated, specific, and good way of articulating what you want to do, giving staff time, needing a second. So when it comes forward, it's got a little more gravitas to it than something that is just thrown in that no one's seen before or hasn't seen for very long. So I totally understand it, but I wouldn't support that.
Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, again, this is probably a question, but I think those sort of things, just the rules that got us into a system where we have a council-initiated action to see if something changed, or the fact that we don't have agenda authority, I think these are all part of our rules. And these are things that we do have time coming up in the next, I think, next month, or is it a couple of months out, to assess some of those. Now, I think there is the idea that we follow Robert's Rules of Order, but we spend some time, and again, I probably didn't appreciate this going through the first time, but we do control some of these things through our rules. And they're rarely, they're usually done because of some problem that happened in the past, and we're trying to get better order going forward. So there's the thing, there's a venue for this. I agree with Councilmember Bransford. I don't, I would not like to have kind of a Wild West agenda where we just throw items into the city administrator and ask to have them on the next or future meeting. It just doesn't sound like a good way to run the city.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I would agree with Mr. Keane and Mr. Bransford, but I only remember one meeting that went over five hours, and that was our budget meeting, which is a public hearing, and takes a long period of time. Our meeting started at 7:00, and we do it once a week. There is a policy for our CIAs, and the city administrator does set the agendas, and she does reply back to your first comment. She does send back things that she thinks is important. I send most of my stuff to the city administrator on Friday afternoon or Friday morning. And, you know, the agenda moves along as what Public Works and Community Development has public hearings. We have no control over that and some agenda things. Some go easy, some go long, and that's just the way that it goes. And that's what we signed up for. So those are my opinions.
Administrator Elms, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I just would also point out that a number of those things are also directly related to the city charter, which can only be changed by a 7-0 vote of the City Council. And those are outlined in Section 8.06. And they talk about setting the agenda for legally required items. And it also talks about other preparation of documents for the City Council. So it is in your rules, sort of in kind of plain process and speak, but there is a significant part of this that is actually embedded within the city charter.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Dennis.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all that information. What I'm coming at just tonight, 8 o'clock, one hour, we've been here. And just back, if you rewind, back at 5:15 this evening, you could see staff looking at their watches to say, oh, my goodness, we're going over. And we had this incredibly important housing update that was a crisis in our society and our city, being rushed through a study session to get done and packing a study session with, you know, very important items often. When, and then we have time now where we are ending early. I just, I would like to see more, I don't know, looking at somehow we can take really important issues and have different areas dedicated for those issues, or being able to pin them on the back of a meeting so that, because efficiency is not necessarily good government. And everyone wants to be efficient. But good government is making sure that things are well understood, that we have questions answered, input from constituents, and things are done correctly, not fast. So I would like to see a little bit more on that end with our agenda. And then my last point.
Councilmember Palmer?
To those points, one, we were rushed today. I thought we had a very good meeting. And number two, this is at least the fourth time that you've mentioned this. And at some point, you just have to take what the answer is to you and understand it.
I appreciate not being scolded. This is an important issue that has been brought up to me by several constituents. My job as a representative is to amplify their voices and bring this issue to the council. I take that as my job as a representative. So, but I will bring this up as many times as the City of Rochester thinks is important. My last point is, I wanted, Mayor Northside here, so I just wanted to chime in. Her State of the Union address was phenomenal. I really enjoyed that, listening to what a wonderful job the city is doing, and watching the video of the staff so elegantly putting together. I wanted to chime in about maybe some feedback came back from people who attended and people who, you know, were very interested in attending but couldn't, that the State of the City address was done early in the morning, and some people couldn't attend. I had to actually leave, like, right when the county commissioner was kind of wrapping up at his point to get my kids' doctor appointments. But it was, I heard from the past that council, the city, State of the City has been done in the council chamber during a meeting. So that might be something to look at for access, for other people to be able to attend. And then also, just wanted to note, because the public comments are often talking about transparency, which I fight for. I do feel that there is a, I don't want to use the word naysayers because we do want to support our city, but bringing up issues respectfully, being really informed and finding what things are wrong with the city, if you bring it up with respect, I feel that is an incredibly important job as well of representatives, of staff, of people in the community, because you need to challenge the status quo to be better and to address problems. So I do want to say I'm, you know, incredibly honored and humbled and incredibly inspired by Rochester, but there's a lot of things we still can work on. And so I really commend those who speak up, who stay informed, and respectfully bring topics that can be improved on with our city. Thank you.
Other business? Mr. Wall, Councilmember Wall?
I would just chime in with Councilmember Dennis that that State of the City address in mourning, were just very, very well done. It was an honor to be there as a citizen of Rochester and as an elected council member. I really thank Mayor Horton and Council President Carlson and so many people who spoke on behalf of the city. Oh, and Administrator Elms as well was a speaker. I don't think anybody else up here was. Maybe Randy Peterson, I don't know. No, I'm just kidding.
No, I was ready to move for German.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Councilmember Wall, there is a supply station over here. You get dry.
Got it.
They're doing, trying to find.